Uh, first question, uh, first question was, uh, do you intend if somebody other than you comes out with a successful endorsement today, will you support that candidate? Candidate Graham, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Candidate Globus, yes or no?
With ranked choice voting, no.
Okay. Uh, candidate Cashman?
No, I will continue my campaign.
Thank you. And candidate Foxworth? Candidate Foxworth, will you support the endorsed candidate if it's not you?
I know I will continue.
Okay. Just to clarify, that was a little choppy. I believe he said, uh, he will continue to campaign. Okay. Okay. Okay, so, the first question is, and the order for this question will be, uh, candidate Foxworth, candidate Cashman, you will go second, candidate Globus will go third, and finally candidate Graham. And the question is, uh, uh, just a point of order, I guess I'm making it myself, uh, requesting advice. Do I, uh, do I use the name of the delegate who asked the question?
I would just ask the question, Brian, and then also I am keeping time for you as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Dana. Um, the question, we need a new approach to helping our neighbors experiencing homelessness.
And Brian, if I could, the, the question should be asked without preamble.
Okay. Oh, well, it says, what can the city do to address, uh, uh, neighbors experiencing homelessness? Guess that's the way that would be phrased. Thanks, Dan. Candidate Foxworth?
Yes. The first thing I will try to do is to make sure that we give them care. I should know making sure that they are a victim. One is is that most of the time we are in this situation because I was homeless for almost seven months. Nobody didn't come to me, nobody addressed me. But the other thing is, is that I had to figure out something, I had to be positioned just in asking questions. But if we know that people are in this kind of situation, we should be in a position of having other resources that can be in a position of making sure that they understand exactly where the resource is at. Most of the time, folks don't know that this stuff is needed and what they need is right here in their hands. The problem is that they don't know. I believe this is all the G T you got to ask. Because if you don't ask, you won't get. We need to be in a position of making sure that people know exactly where to go and ask the right questions.
Okay, next.
Thanks. Uh, I think we need a better approach on homelessness that focuses on the underlying issues of why people are homeless. Instead of reactionary approach that is evicting people from place to place. We need to broaden our partnerships with Hennepin County and the state to tackle this problem. So we should explore solutions that address the underlying causes of homelessness, including housing unaffordability, uh, access to shelters, access to supportive housing, and also access to long-term treatment programs and ensure that our houseless neighbors can, can access these resources.
Thank you. Next. Candidate Globus?
Yeah, homelessness obviously is a serious issue in our city. One model that I really like is something that's been done in the North Loop, north, uh, on North Washington Avenue, and it's a building that's owned by Lerner Publishing. What they've done is in this warehouse slash office space, they've created an environment where every single person living there gets a one, a small one-room place to live and call their own, and there's a shared bathroom situation. But it gives people a chance to get off the street to feel like they're got a roof over their head. And it's a program that's worked really well. And I think we can replicate that specific type of a model in other places in the city to get people off the streets. That's so important. And just to point out, I am the only person in the race who has actually designed, built and created housing. I'd also be the only person on the city council who has that background. So I think that's important.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And finally, uh, candidate Graham.
Thank you. Uh, at the top, let me start out by saying it's simply inhumane to allow people to live in encampments that are rife with hard drug use, human trafficking, and other evils. Uh, I like the model that we've implemented called the Avivo Village, uh, which offers shelter to people experiencing homelessness, but it also provides wraparound services like mental health, uh, excuse me, mental health counseling, healthcare, substance treatment, et cetera. Um, and it's being done in a way that is culturally, culturally responsive and trauma-informed. Uh, it works, we should expand it. Uh, and I think that the, uh, key is to be able to access federal and state money to help do this. So we don't put the burden of these, you know, important resources on the taxpayers of Minneapolis. There is a, uh, sales tax being debated right now in the state Capitol in the legislature, which will help provide more, uh, resources for professionals and resources. And it's another step toward the commitment we need to foster the ending of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I'd like to thank the candidates. This is, uh, first question, of course, but it's working pretty well. When Dan says time, I, uh, plan on at the completion of that sentence, me saying thank you right away. So, so that worked pretty well. We're going to continue that. Okay, great. So, thank you, candidates. The next question, here will be the order. Mr. Globus, Mr. Foxworth, Mr. Scott, and Ms. Cashman. Okay? How will you support increased safety in the city of Minneapolis?
Safety, uh, in the city of Minneapolis is key. We, uh, police department that we support, but the police department needs to be accountable. I support hiring another hundred police officers and bringing our police department up to par. I believe that we need to pay the top wages in the region so we can get the top people. On top of it, as I mentioned before, with PTSD, we need to make sure our officers are getting treatment and they're not just getting granted disability. If we treat them, they can recover and they can come back and they can serve our city. We need a true focus on safety in the city of Minneapolis. I will bring that focus. I will work closely along with the mayor to make sure that we have that focus and that we are decreasing crime and that we get things like carjacking. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. Next. Mr. Foxworth, same question?
Thank you for having me. The question that you have to say, are we safe? Issues that we have to understand is that we keep on talking about one police, but there's other areas we need to deal with, what we need to understand. It takes a community to raise a child. It's not just the police. It's the community involvement to be involved. It's the medical aspect of it. We need to be in a position, knowing one word for me, because I live down here, I ride a light rail, I go to Target. I see all those issues that comes and around me. It's not just one issue, it's a lot of issues. How we do that and how we give people to feel safe is to make them look at themselves and get them to a point where they can understand that we got their back as much as you got our back in a position of looking different ways. How can we do that? Is to give them activities that can be in a position of doing our youth because there's no after-school programs or anything like that. The other thing is is programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Graham?
Yes, thank you. Uh, public safety is the number one issue facing our city. It's what I've been talking most to about the voters. Uh, how can city council materially affect this? City council ratifies the mayor's budget, and we could also amend it. And we're going to need to make sure that we are properly funding our public safety department and not just the police. And we need to hire more than a hundred cops. It's closer to two hundred. We need to be up to the charter required minimum of seven hundred and thirty-five officers sworn. Uh, at one point, we had nine hundred and ninety officers, and we are obviously well below that. Uh, the fifth precinct, uh, inspector told me the other day that we were down to five hundred and eighteen officers who are able to respond. Uh, we do that by bolstering our budgets and bolstering them for related services like behavioral health responders and violence interrupters. I'd also like to see the downtown council expand their ambassador program into Loring Park. And the way we're going to do some of these things is by finding the money in the Biden bills at the federal level and bringing it back to Minneapolis.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cashman, you have the floor.
Thank you. Right, my number one priority in Minneapolis is to ensure that all of the residents in Ward Seven as well as visitors feel safe and can depend on our public safety department. I was very heartened to see that we had a unanimous vote on the council to move forward with police reform and accountability in March of this year. But we need leadership to see this through in order to expand hiring pathways and fill our police staffing shortage. So beyond the requirements of the enforceable settlement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, I support expanding our behavioral crisis response team to twenty-four-seven service to meet our, meet the demand for that service. We also need to continue the nine-one-one first responder study to better determine emergency response needs and how to divert calls to different first responders. We also need to ensure that those providing public safety for our community reflect our city and our values. So we need more women and more people of color represented, not only in M P D, but M F D, nine-one-one, et cetera.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Okay. So for the third question, uh, we are starting with Ms. Cashman, followed by Mr. Graham, Mr. Foxworth, and Mr. Globus. And forth, okay? And the question is, how can Minneapolis help address the climate crisis? Ms. Cashman, you have the floor once again.
All right, so Minneapolis needs a climate leader, um, that can meet people where they are and ensure that people understand their role in curbing the climate crisis and what we can do in our city, in our homes, in our own backyards, uh, to take on this global issue. So every day on the campaign, I'm talking to constituents about the opportunities we have right now to make our city safer and healthier, uh, by addressing environmental issues. Uh, public leadership for climate action means showing constituents what they can do in their homes and in our public spaces, uh, to curb the climate crisis and show that as we improve our dated infrastructure for climate resilience, we make our quality of life better in the process. And this is something I have been working on very diligently at the state Capitol, uh, the past few years, and I have led educational programs on climate action, um, globally to teach people about this very critical issue.
Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, the city has a great environmental plan and we need to fully implement it. Um, I would like to be there to, uh, serve as a leader in reducing energy use and, uh, through conservation. Some of the things we could do, uh, what if we created a, um, program like the Metropolitan Airport Commission did to mitigate airport noise? Where we had a program piloted in our green zones that supported weatherization and insulation of properties, including apartments. And we did it as an opt-out so that landlords who aren't responsible for paying the energy bills uh, have a more difficult time resisting the improvement of their facilities, their buildings. And, you know, weatherization and insulation is such an inexpensive way to reduce energy usage. Once the program's working, we could expand it citywide, and then we could also press into rooftop solarization. And I have out of time, sorry. Lots of ideas.
Thank you.
Just, uh, Mr. Chair, if I could. I am, uh, if you see my camera, I'm kind of giving you seconds of like ten seconds and then five, four, three, two, one. So when I put this up, it means ten seconds.
I thought it meant stop right now.
No, I saw it kind of counting down earlier when you had the single hand up and you were dropping fingers. So, thank you. Um, and, uh, Mr. Foxworth, I believe is next?
Yes. Thank you. I think the thing that we have to do is reach, teach and greet, or greet, reach and teach. The problem that we have is is that we have communities that don't know that there's resources out there, especially when it comes to community. All of them don't have the proper information that's necessary to stop out there so they can be in a position to be, uh, informed. I think that, and really to be empowered. My thing that I want to do is make sure that they get the information, time on meetings, uh, different programs that's in schools and in the park board. Making sure that they will get every information that we can to provide them the best so they can be positioned to having the things that is necessary for them in dealing with their environment.
Thank you very much. Uh, finally, Mr. Globus, you have the floor.
How long do we get again for each question? Uh, maybe one minute, one minute. Um, you know, global warming is the number one most important issue that our nation's facing right now. It's a huge issue. We need to get it under control. But the question that we have to ask ourselves is, sitting on the Minneapolis City Council, exactly what can we do? There's things being done by the governor, there's things being done by the president. But let's talk about what we can do locally on the Minneapolis City Council to make sure that global warming and climate equity issues are addressed. With climate equity, I want to make sure that the poorest areas in our city are no longer carrying the brunt of all the polluting types of uses that the city has. We need to be more cognizant of where we're putting, uh, our various, uh, plants and uh, diesel, uh, refueling sites. One thing that we can do is we can put a big push on rooftop solar, and what we would do is we would give apartment owners a, uh, break on their licensing fee to do, uh, projects like that. I'd also like to see is that.
Yeah, that was time.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Oh, yeah, I was just letting you finish your sentence. So thank you very much. Um, okay. Thanks to all the candidates for the climate question. Okay. Question number four, this will be the order, Mr. Graham, Mr. Foxworth, Ms. Cashman will go third, and followed by Mr. Globus. Okay. How have you been involved in the DFL and, and supported DFL candidates in Minneapolis and across the state?
Well, this is an area where I really excel. Um, I mentioned earlier that I was the, uh, Chair of Senate District Sixty-One for ten years, and then the, uh, State Party Affairs Director. I've worked on countless campaigns throughout the state. Uh, Senate District Sixty-One realized when I was the Chair that we had, well, it wasn't a awakening. We knew we had strong Democratic support for our local candidates. So we set out to work in, uh, the suburbs, which is where majorities are made. And I've been working all over the suburbs throughout the Twin Cities, plus St. Cloud, plus elsewhere, to help elect people who create strong majorities, includes Melissa Hortman, my good friends, Aaron May Quaid, Claire Verbatim, my neighbor, environmental activist Larry Kraft, the list goes on and on. I've really pushed in hard on supporting Democratic candidates. That's why we have a trifecta. Uh, not me personally, of course, but by, because of all of us pushing in on all these campaigns, we have a trifecta. And that's getting us the legislation that we're going to enjoy for the next generation.
Perfect, thank you. Next.
Yeah, if you can see my butt right here, you got a young lady that had me the spirit and helped me a great deal in opening a book. Uh, who, uh, passed at the same time, Paul Wellstone. The other person that I want to remember is Albie Underwood, because she was the one that really got me involved in the DFL. From that, I became, uh, the DNC member. I went around the whole state. Then I became the caucus for the DNC. I have spent almost almost thirty-five, almost four years dealing with the DFL. I had to step back because of the situation, personal things, and so now I'm back and I'm ready to serve again. Thank you.
Uh, thanks. My experience, my experience in the DFL is as a twelve-year DFL voter. And also in the last few years, I have been working at a state advocacy firm, a public interest law firm that works very closely with the DFL legislature, uh, both the House and the State Senate. And I'm really glad this year that several of the bills that we have worked on uh, were taken up by, uh, leaders in the Senate and the House and have passed through. For example, the Hundred Percent Bill that is committing Minnesota to hundred percent clean energy by the year twenty forty, as well as a ban on PFAS, forever chemicals in our water supply, which has been harming communities and causing rare forms of cancer. Uh, we have also worked on the lead service lines replacement bill that passed this session um, and several other environmental bills that made it through. So I have worked more on the policy side and working with the state, uh, legislature for those DFL candidates to make that policy reality.
That's your time, thank you.
Thank you. Next. So, Mr. Globus?
Thanks for enmuting me. You know, I'm a lifelong DFL-er. I'm a lifelong Democrat. I believe in those principles and what makes the party strong. I also ran for mayor in twenty twenty-one, which gave me a much better understanding of city politics and the DFL and what it takes to run a successful campaign. I've convened my precinct caucuses on several occasions. I've always been very active in Senate District Sixty-One. I'm part of them, uh,
Uh-oh. Pause that timer real quick, please, Dan.
Should we get to go now?
Okay. Did we miss part of his?
Did I get my full allotment of time or?
Yeah, I stopped your time, don't worry. So you can, uh, we heard the sentence, part of my, and I think that was, it trailed off from there.
Go ahead then.
Yes.
I was just gonna say, on top of my political experience, I have a great deal of business background experience. I have a business in Ward Seven, a hotel near the convention center. I've worked very closely with the city along, uh, making that business successful as well as being an attorney. I think a combination of political experience with business experience and with legal experience is a good background. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, and, uh, sorry for that blip, but luckily, uh, my co-chair, uh, Thomas Cummins, uh, was, um, uh, quick on the, quick on the timer, because we certainly don't want to, don't want anybody to lose their, their fair share of time. So, so thank you to all with your patience on all of that. And thank you, everybody, for that, your responses to that question. Okay, now, uh, question five. Uh, the order will be Mr. Foxworth, Mr. Globus, Ms. Cashman, and Mr. Graham. Does everybody have that? Okay. Okay. Tell me about, tell us, I'm sorry. Tell us about a time when you had to tell an ally, no. Mr. Foxworth, go ahead. You're first.
That's a hard thing to do, but it's the easiest thing. We do the right thing, and you already know that is a fact that is directly. And there was a situation that happened to me when I was in Duluth, and, um, I was running a hundred fifty-four miles. Very scholarship, or the university, the boot camp. Name is the Harry Oldes Scholarship. I mean, people saying that, you know, the negative words, but so many people didn't understand passion and dreams that was necessary to make it become reality. So I had a whole group that had to say no. From that, that scholarship is now over seventy-five thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
You know, um, you want to stay close to your allies, but, uh, sometimes you need to diverge. And that's one thing that I've learned in business, running several businesses, is sometimes you and your business partners may not agree on things, and sometimes you need to take a step away, and you need to take a stand, and you need to say, look, look, this is the way I think things should be. This is why logically, I always get everybody's input. I want to make sure I'm making the best position. But sometimes you have to stand alone, and it's lonely out there on that point. But what I've found time and time again is, six, twelve months later, my take on things is what is bared itself out, has borne itself out, and I've made the correct decisions, even though so many times I've had to make those alone. I think on the city council, obviously you need to be a consensus builder. Obviously, you need buy-in for anything that, that you're trying to get past. But at the same time, you need to be capable of being the lone voice and sticking to what you believe in and that you think is right. And I see time and time again on the city council that too many times people are just voting as a thirteen block where there should be people that are in the minority and voting against something.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you. My, my answer to this question, uh, relates to my nonprofit work and our building of a community center in Nairobi, Kenya. We needed to fundraise thirty thousand dollars very quickly in order to get the construction started. And we actually had a large donation request or offer from another organization. And, you know, I was very inclined to take that donation from the other nonprofit. Uh, however, the community was very clear that they wanted to retain full control of that community center. And the other nonprofit was asking for partial control over programming and to have their name on the building, et cetera. And in that instance, I had to tell that ally that no, we would not accept their donation, which was a difficult decision because we had to find the funding elsewhere. Uh, but in the end, it was about the community sovereignty and what their wishes were and, uh, retaining the importance of their voice in decision-making.
Thank you. Go ahead. Mr. Graham, you're, uh,
Oh, I beg your pardon. I thought I was fourth on this one. I must have, uh, so, if you know me, you know, I've got a backbone. Um, I'm honest, I'm direct. In my real estate business, I do a lot of business with personal friends, and I give them straight counsel. And, um, I build on relationships. That's how I function. People know what to expect from me. I'd like to take a portion of this, uh, time to remind you that I'm the only candidate you're talking to today who has said he would abide by the, or they would abide by, abide by the endorsement. And the reason is that I'm the candidate that wants to pull us all together. To me, this is about unity. So, um, I hope you see that too, and I would love to earn your support today when we get to the voting a little bit later.
Thank you very much, everyone. I was just gonna check with my co-chair, Jan Thomas Cummins, uh, for an update on time. I have another question, but, uh, I will cede to you, uh, to chime in on the time we have allowed.
So there's, by my thirty-minute timer, we were, I think, just about out, but I think we could probably extend it by one just to have this I think just about out, but I think we could probably extend it by one just to have this last question here and that would just be the final question, considering all the sort of interruptions that we had along the way.
Uh, it sounds reasonable. Uh, if everyone else, if all the candidates are agreeable then uh, and all the delegates, then uh, we proceed to question number six. The order of this will be Mr. Graham, Ms. Cashman will be second, uh, Mr. Globus will be third, and Mr. Foxworth will uh, wrap up the question and answer with the answer to this question. What would you like to see done during the upcoming Franklin Avenue reconstruction? Mr. Graham, please proceed.
Well, I think what should be done is neighbors should be listened to. The constituents in that particular ward should be uh, in council with their city council person to find out what sort of asset they want there. Uh, the Franklin Avenue Bridge uh, is located between Seward and the University of Minnesota. So pedestrian and bicycle uh, access uh, have to be considered as uh, of primary importance. Uh, I do not know what the physical asset of the bridge is in terms of its width and what it can support. Generally speaking, as a cyclist, I like to see bike lanes that are as separated from car lanes as possible via an elevated curb or some kind of physical barrier like that to make it uh, feel more comfortable and uh, safe to ride on. It would also be great if Minneapolis could pilot a heated bike lane. Uh, downtown, we have a common steam plant and it'd be cool if we could do a heated bike facility that would give us the same type of thing they have in cities in Europe. It would still be wet in the winter, but it wouldn't be icy. Uh, it'd be great to be able to ride and know that my front tire wasn't going to slip out from under me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Uh, Ms. Cashman, you have the floor for one minute.
Thank you. So what I understand about Franklin Avenue is that there are multiple jurisdictions along Franklin Avenue, which is why some reconstructions happen at different times because it's a city road, a county road, a state road at different junctures. So I think in this issue, we need to definitely work with county and state partners. We need to be in collaboration. The Franklin Avenue Bridge, I actually bike over to get to work in St. Paul. Uh, last week was National Bike to Work Day and we had a big crew from Minneapolis biking over the bridge together. I think the bike lanes are great on Franklin Avenue. My issue with Franklin Avenue is the uh, intersection stoplight on the east side of the bridge, which has, if you've been there, multiple lanes, I think five different roads connecting into one and it's quite unsafe. So when I think about reconstruction, my number one priority is safety. I believe that we should be implementing our Vision Zero plan, which is to ensure that nobody dies from car accidents. And in order to do that, we need to improve our infrastructure.
Thank you. Mr. Globus?
Hmm. As far as the Franklin Avenue realignment and bridge goes, you know, I may be a little bit old school and when I see what's happened on Hennepin Avenue, on the realignment there, I believe that there still should be parking on both sides of Hennepin Avenue. We need to make sure that those biz, that people can get to those businesses and those businesses can do business. For example, where I get my haircut right on Hennepin Avenue and Twenty-Fourth. Sud Salon, they've gone out of business. You know, we need to be really careful about how we do these realignments and thinking twenty years into the future is not always the best way. And this may be one area where Scott, Graham and I did disagree. A heated bike lane on Franklin Avenue is not where I'd be putting my resources. I want to make sure that bikers are safe, but that cars can get to where they need to get. We need to put our money towards public safety and creating more housing and not necessarily towards creating additional bike lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I think the most important thing that you can look at is really the city. You know, being a uh, student athlete, right? And then back over west East River Road and seeing the traffic that you have on that, on the East Riverside of the uh, of Franklin. I mean, the problem that you have is, is not, is not a Minneapolis thing. Exactly what I'm saying. It's a state and a county thing. From that, getting that together, bringing them together is the most important thing that you can do. My thing that I would like to do is for the bikes not to be outside. They should be in the middle so they can look at both sides of the road instead of looking at one or the other. And plus of all, you have a space where people can really walk and you have some cars that can go into that bridge. At that time, I think that would be a great point. But another thing in that I'd like to do between Franklin and Nena, I would like to bring back Udon BBQ. Yeah, I'd like to be in the vision of having that back. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, this does conclude our question and answer.